Allegiance. Okay, thanks for coming, everybody. Another beautiful fall day today. And we rolled our clocks back, right? Fall back. Roll call, please.
Karen Straffen.
Here.
Tom Feder.
Here.
Tom Kruger.
Absent excuse.
Artie Bryson.
Here.
Cindy Valentine.
Here.
John Horvath.
Here.
Joanne Shirkey.
Here.
All right. We do have a quorum. Bills payable. Entertainer motion, bills payable.
Tom's not here.
I know. I'm motion man.
Take a motion.
I don't make a motion. Pay the bills in the amount of $138,561.13.
Support.
Yeah, motion and support. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Tom Feder.
Yes.
Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. John Horvath.
Yes.
Joanne Shirkey.
Yes.
Karen Straffen.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Oh, we got them up there, okay. Next, we have a presentation for our friends here. We got a live mic there.
You're gonna get him out of here. You're not gonna let him listen to the supervisor's report?
No, they'll stay and listen to the supervisor's report because they want to hear it. Unlike you. I'm sorry.
That's okay. Good evening. I'm Dennis Stoli, and I'm with the Ascent Group. We are a insurance brokerage company. Currently, we handle Marine City, City of Algonquin, City of New Baltimore. Those are clients of ours. So one of the things that we did, we were asked to go out to bid and take a look at the benefit package. I put a quick summary. Rather than reading through all the articles in your packet, I just kind of summed up real quick. So one of the things that we did when we looked, we identified a program with HAP that we're going to be able to install, a healthcare reimbursement arrangement. This will reimburse the deductibles. By looking at that program, the estimated premium came in at about $39,612. The current premium was $49,879. So it gave you a monthly difference of about $10,267. If I had to take an estimate on that, I would estimate that we're gonna use about $45,000 of the 123,000 in savings, which is gonna leave you an estimated savings of about $78,000. So that's on the first page. We also looked at Blue Cross. We also looked at other carriers. Those are on the bottom. They all came in higher. I think this is probably your best opportunity. On the back of the page, while we were looking around, shopping around, looking at the market, we ended up finding a life insurance carrier that would take your life insurance, lock in your rates for the next three years. That was a $16 savings. Not a lot of savings, but we bought more years in rate lock. In addition to that, we went neutral with a three-year rate guarantee, which means your pricing will increase for the next three years on short-term disability. And we found a better vision provider by the name of VSP. So it's gonna give your employees a much broader place to shop for their vision expenses.
That's like a PPO, right?
Yep. Yep, for the vision. We ended up spending a little money on dental, but we made the dental quite a bit better. So overall, the package came in at about $76,457.28 for the year of 2017. So, great savings.
Does everyone understand how the health benefits are gonna work?
I think I do.
I have a question about... Okay, so this is a health reimbursement account.
Yep.
Were you able to access and use our... The amount of money that our HSA paid out to come up with this plan? The current... We have a current health savings account? No? No. No, that went away a couple, three years ago. That went off... Wait a minute now. I thought we were still with an HSA. Nope. We're not. No. So we do have a health reimbursement account. No, we don't have anything. We don't. Like that. So the township's just paying it out right now? Right. Okay. Yep. You were able to access that amount of money? I mean, you guys gave them that information. Because I just wanted to make sure that these estimates were...
Yeah, it's a good question. So how do we get these estimates? So throughout all of our municipal pools, we have roughly about 42 to 45 municipals that we handle HRA accounts for.
Okay.
So we do it quite often. With deductibles this size, I would say they're probably gonna fall in the 40% to 50% range. But I wouldn't be surprised if they fall less than that. That'd be my guess, or my best estimate, based on our book of business. And again, we have a lot of your neighbors and whatnot. So I would say if the $45,000... If we were standing here a year from today, we may be talking about $35,000, maybe $30,000. $45,000 is kind of a higher estimate, considering the fact that there's still office visits and other items that are still being paid outside of the deductible. So I think this is a good plan.
Okay, and you guys administer everything?
Yeah. So one of the... What we did is... That was one of Supervisor Bryson's and Clerk Valentine's concern is how are the employees gonna be getting reimbursed for these deductibles? So we're gonna do it internally with HAP. So we have a carrier that will link into HAP, and it'll pay that internally. So it won't be a lot of work for the employee.
And then we just get billed.
Yeah.
The employee doesn't have to deal with a deductible.
So if there's a problem, they're not gonna call you, they're gonna call you?
Yep.
Right. I mean, this is six, eight years ago. They tried a plan, but the employee had mail in their own EOB. It was administrative nightmare. I told them, "We can't do that." If there's one mistake, it might get tonight and... Right. And so this is all done, you know, behind the scenes, instantly.
Integrated with the carrier.
So would you be considered like a third-party health administrator, then?
A lot of people do consider us that. We're a broker, but we do have a lot of relationships with TTPAs.
Okay.
So one of the other items that was on our list was to install flexible spending account. So that's one of the other items that we'd be able to do. That'll allow the employee to take pre-tax out of their check, to pay for dependent care, and to pay for expenses that are not covered, or Section 162 items that are covered, like dental insurance, dental expenses would be covered under flex spend. Any premiums that you pay outside of this copays, things of that nature.
And we're gonna talk more about that later, but with the flexible spending, the FSA, that actually saves the township money, too, because the employee doesn't have to pay the payroll tax on it, and we don't have to pay their match. So it saves us money also.
So there's no fighting social on the pre-tax dollars?
Right. So, correct me if I'm wrong, Dennis, but, I mean, looking... I mean, hindsight's 20/20, and looking... If we had this plan this year, looking backwards, we'd probably save, what, $90,000, you estimated?
You would've saved quite a bit of money, yes.
Yeah. Yeah. So...
Yeah.
And still with HAP, basically the same coverage, same plan. The dental's better.
Correct.
Vision's gonna be better.
Copayments are a little less on the generic end, so instead of being $20, it's $5, or $15. Yep.
Right. It's less... Payments are less.
So typically, what are everyone else's health benefits? They're increasing in a percentage approximately?
Anywhere between 16% to 23%.
So we're saving the increase, and then we're also saving...
From where we were.
From where we were.
Because we're making a plan adjustment. Yeah. They've been a little higher this year than they were in years past because of all the tightening up of the ACA requirements.
And just so the board knows, I did call... I mean, I'm pretty good friends with the managers for New Baltimore Bonnie, and then the Marine City managers, and they said nothing but good things. And, you know, I was more worried about the administrative part of it, and they said no problems whatsoever.
Very, very highly of you guys.
Oh, thank you.
So...
And we do offer a employee portal where the employees could access all their forms, things of that nature. So they'd be able to do that online, rather than coming to HR department saying, "Hey, where's that form, and how's that plan work?" We host the item online where each individual has access to that. So they don't have to worry about scrambling around. Or if there's a spouse that handles the insurance and the employee doesn't handle it, they can call in the office, and we could access their folder and walk them through how that program works.
Nice.
Any other questions, Ren? Did you talk... Did you present this to the unions? Well, did you talk to... Initially, a little bit. I mean, we're gonna have to do that. But I know you talked to a couple of the...
Yeah, to Jim.
Yeah.
Jim Tiggonali.
Jim Tiggonali.
Briefly.
But I really don't see any problems whatsoever, but we'll do that starting, you know, tomorrow. We're basically just gonna tell them before we approve it. Well, no. I mean, it is a better plan. I know. I'm just saying. You know, it's, you know, equal to or better is the language, and it is a better plan for both. It's a win-win.
The prescription cost went down to the employee as well.
Right.
The other item that I wanted to remind you of is the Public Act. You'd have to either decide to opt out or enact 8020 before the end of the year.
Yeah.
If you wanted to do that this evening, certainly good, but just to give you a friendly reminder.
We'll have a resolution. We'll probably bang that out next meeting or two.
Excellent. Any other questions, though?
Thank you.
You guys are easy.
I know. It's terrible.
Thank you.
We listen.
That's good.
All right. Thanks, like, Dennis and Doug, for coming out, so... Okay, do we have any public comments relating to anything on the agenda? Any public comments? Seeing none. We have the consent agenda. Entertainer motion for the consent agenda. You got it?
I got it. I'll make a motion to pass. The consent agenda contained the minutes of board meeting of October 17th, 2016, and synopsis. Special board meeting of October 28th, 2016, and synopsis. Reports containing the check reports, the police October activity report, and there were no notices, communication, or requests at this time for November 7th.
Support? Okay, we have motion and support. Any discussion or anything on the consent agenda? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Excuse me, everybody. Breathing too much leaves smoke. Supervisor's report. Skip that. Let's see. Want to let the board know, we did receive our road match grant of $50,000 for the Collin Isle subdivision project. That's pretty cool. I mean, it's a program through the county, but usually they only let townships do it every other year. You gotta skip a year. We've been fortunate enough to get it four years in a row, and which we're very grateful. So that project is gonna cost... Estimated cost $135,000. Our cost will be $85,000, and the county's gonna kick in the $50,000 for that. And again, that's going to be a microseal cap over its Marina, Aqua Isle, Riverside, Park Lane. And also, on that note, we're gonna be starting... I don't have an exact date, but here in the next month or two, the bridge, Merrill Street Bridge that goes over to Sassy, and that's pretty much all gonna be paid for by federal and state grants. It's about an $850,000 project. Our cost of township will be about $3,000. I don't have exact start date.
I still can't believe that dollar amount.
Oh, I know. You know, it's... Flamingo, they're saying close to a million. You know, you look at it, and I mean, I know what docks and things. I'm thinking 250 grand, maybe. You know, it's a 40-foot canal. But so be it. Yeah, we should be in the bridge-building business. Okay, where are we? Oh, as everybody knows, we did receive our insurance payment for the bond on the investment, and we are attempting of $80,000. We are attempting to get IRS refund for the payroll tax paid on that. The auditors think we have a pretty good shot of getting it, and that's gonna be about 15% of that. So we're hoping to get about a $12,000 refund. We probably won't know for a couple, three months if that gets done or not. But we have submitted the paperwork, and hopefully we will see, realize another $12,000 from that. And I just want to mention, too, soon, we're gonna be starting a temporary dog kennel project in the police station. We have to wait to move some communication. Yeah, surprise? No. We gotta wait to move some communications equipment there. That's basically where the kennel's gonna be. And we are working with a young gentleman. It's gonna be his Eagle Scout project.
Mr. Prevost.
Yes. And in fact, I gotta set up a meeting with him this next week, and pretty soon we'll be getting that going, so... And basically, what it's gonna be is a temporary kennel if we find a dog or cat or... Not a horse, but...
Not a cat.
And...
I was gonna say, I can help you there.
Yeah, I'm sure we can find a place. But, you know, so we can house them for two or three days. And I'll tell you what, we are very lucky. I mean, if we do find a lost pet, we usually find a home for them within a couple days, so... But anyhow, this will be a good thing. The board knew that we had a lawsuit against Clay. It was John McLean versus Clay Township on a dangerous building case. We did agree to a consent agreement on it, and, you know, it's all signed and recorded. Basically, the consent agreement, excuse me, states that we had... The owner of the property has to December 31st either demolish it or make it safe. And I say making it safe is a new roof and three walls. The walls have to be, you know, either sided or wood that's painted, and it has to be 100% done, not 75, not 50% done. If it's not done by December 31st, the township has the right to go in and demolish the structure and put all the costs on to... Either they have to pay it, or it will go onto their taxes. So they have to, to the end of the year, to make it right. And, you know, I was pretty confident if we did go to court, that's what probably the judgment would've been anyhow. And so, well, we went ahead with the consent agreement on that. I did order the appraisal done on the property that's for sale next to the water department, and I actually just received about three hours ago an email with that appraisal. I didn't really even open it up, and I'll get with the board members on that. And that's gonna be a negotiating deal. I really don't want to make that public at this amount, at this time. I just want to let the board also know that we did, and everybody else, we did rescind Anita Rezepa's letter of resignation, so she will be remaining as our deputy treasurer. And I think she's very happy now, staying here, and we worked everything out. And Tom Kruger, he's gonna be out of the office for a while. He's recuperating from a surgery. I want to let the board know, about a month ago, we had a deer hit one of our new patrol cars on the side and did some damage. The damage, it ended up to be about $3,500 in repairs, we got estimates. Our deductible's $2,500. I'm thinking that's not worth for us turning into insurance for $1,000. I mean, it was gonna be out-of-pocket $2,500. So my thought is that we just go ahead and have the car fixed for the $3,500. Any thoughts on that, or...
Did the deer hit the car, or did the car hit the deer?
The deer hit the car.
So it's on the side?
It's on the side.
Okay.
And it's too bad, because... I mean, it's not too... It is too bad. But the deer did live, and... But we had that...
As far as we know, right?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
No, I know. I could say about five things right now, but... We did have that other patrol car that got wrecked, but it was the same side that got damaged. Too bad it wasn't the other side. We could've swapped and had one good car out of it. All right, so much for the deer hitting the car. Or the car, whatever. Last weekend, we had a scarecrow festival in the park, and it was a huge success. I mean, we put this together in a hurry, I think about three and a half weeks, and I think we probably had at least 200 people over there, and all the kids there, they all had smiles. We had a scarecrow contest. We brought in a really cool DJ. And we had an opportunity for people, they could make their own scarecrows. We got a bunch of clothes from the Salvation Army. We had little sticks made, crosses, and we didn't know what to expect. We had straw and everything. We ran out of scarecrow stuff. The fire department was there, the police department was handling all stuff. Next year, this thing is gonna be four times as big. It was a really huge success. Everybody that was there was happy, and, like I say, we kinda did it on the fly, and everybody that was there, "Oh, my God, next year, we can do this and that." And it's got the making of a really good event. Upcoming events, I got the flyers. We have a cooking matters class. It's Monday evenings from 6:00 to 8:00 at the high school, and walk-ins are available. We have November 7th, 14th, 21st, and 28th. It's at 6:00 to 8:00. And it's taught by a chef through MSU. And includes talks about nutrition, budgeting, and then they actually cook some stuff, and it's free. So it's put on by the Michigan State Extension. And we actually have six ongoing programs right now. We have a new kickoff. We're trying to make a leisure activity club kickoff meeting at the Algonquin High School Thursday, November 10th, from 6:00 to 10:00, and that's a $3 charge. And again, they are going to talk about doing different activities, walking, and... Where is that? And... Yeah. And so they'll have snacks there, games, and meet new friends. Anyhow, that's at the Algonquin Senior Junior High School in the common areas, Thursday, November 10th, Leisure and Activity Club kickoff. Our consumer education series is still continuing. It's the third Wednesday of the month, November 16th. Here at the hall, we're gonna be talking about investment frauds, fraud, and that's put on by the Attorney General's Office. And then January 18th is home care and senior resident scams. And like, again, it's free. We have our Christmas photo shoot for family Christmas pictures. That's gonna be Saturday, December 3rd and 4th. Here in the hall, it's $25, and you get some pictures taken, and Tom Watkins is gonna do that, and it's... I heard that people have had it done in the past, and he does a very good job. For $25, you get Christmas pictures taken. That's a pretty good deal. And then we have another group that's gonna be starting. It's called Eat Healthy. It's a new thing. Eat Healthy, Be Active. Starts January 7th, 9:30 a.m. at the Township Hall. It's gonna go for six weeks. Again, it's free. And if you want any details, we will have flyers out on our website and our Facebook page, and, yeah. Then we are in the process of organizing the Clay Township youth tennis, youth team tennis, ages from 5 to 10. The U.S. Tennis Association's gonna provide us with a coach, and I believe they'll have rackets and balls and everything that's needed. It's ages 5 through 10, Wednesday, January 11th through February 15th, every Wednesday. Grades K through 1st are 5:30, 6:15. Grades 2nd through 3rd, 6:15 to 7 p.m. Grades 4th and 5th, 7 to 8. And it's a $75 charge if you register before the 18th. So if you want some good tutelage on beginning tennis, it's a good opportunity to do that. The Pearl Beach Lions is gonna have their Christmas in the park, December 3rd, at 3:00 to 6:00 p.m. That's a great event. They have Santa Claus, they do sleigh rides, and the tree lighting's gonna be at 5:00. I gotta get with you, we're gonna bring in a big tree.
Okay.
In about a week. I got a guy that donated a tree. Hot dogs and hot chocolate. And you guys have all... Is the choir coming?
They'll be there. They'll be singing at 4:00.
Okay, the Algonquin High School Choir will be at 4:00 during Christmas carols.
When does it start, please?
3:00.
3:00.
December 3rd. So lots of good things going on. And now, I wanted to... I was gonna actually talk about this first, but this is... I don't know, this is really fun for me. The House and the Senate recognize Clay Township as the Sturgeon Angling capital of the state, and they passed resolutions, several, we gotta get a frame for this, but really proud of it, and it's a great thing. I want to recognize my friend, Jim. Jim, come on up here. I'm gonna put you on the spot. If it wasn't for this gentleman, it wouldn't have happened. And you wanna say a few words about it?
Yeah, Artie, and also about the North Channel Sturgeon Classic.
Right.
And I'll try to be brief here, but... And I'm Jim Falgner. I'm the president of our local Sturgeon for Tomorrow chapter, St. Clair Detroit River Sturgeon for Tomorrow. And, you know, we worked along with Artie and Tom Feder, of course, and Senator Phil Pavlo, and Representative Dan Lowers to get this resolution passed, naming Clay Township as the Sturgeon Angling capital of Michigan. So a group effort, and just really proud to have accomplished that. So I just wanted to come tonight and then thank Artie and Tom specifically for their efforts involved in doing that, so... One of my customers over on Aqua Isles asked me, "What does that mean?" Okay. And, you know, I see this not as an ending, but as a beginning.
For sure.
Of a symbiotic relationship between the township and the fish. It brings the resource to the forefront, highlights how special and unique the Sturgeon are and the fishery that we have here is. When you think about fishing, okay? When you think about walleyes, you think about the Detroit River in the springtime. When you think about muskies, you think about the world-class fishing in Lake St. Clair. When you think of trout, immediately, you think of the holy waters of the Osavo River. Well, what this will do, we hope, is that the first thing that will come to mind when you think about Sturgeon fishing in Michigan is Clay Township. Okay? That should be your first immediate thought. So we hope that by passing this resolution, that we can use this as a tool to bring tourism to the area. And we think there's a lot of economic benefit to be gained by the people in the township. Good friend of mine, charter captain Tom Loy, lives on Flamingo. He has quite a vigorous Sturgeon fishing charter business going right now. I just talked to him the other night. He had some people in town from Lansing that did not know that this fishery existed. These are evidently pretty well-to-do people. He had some other clients that booked several evenings, okay? And what happens typically is these people will come to Clay Township, North Channel, they will catch these Sturgeon, and they'll go back and tell everybody they know. Okay? So this will become a Sturgeon fishing destination here. And so I just would like the people of Clay Township to, you know, welcome these people as they come here with open arms. here with open arms, and I think we can use this to promote the local community. At the same time, I think it's important to remember that, that the Lake Sturgeon already threatens species. They're very highly regulated, you know, it's a highly regulated fishery, and it's important that as the fishing pressure increases, that the people in the township continue to work to help preserve and protect the fish, you know, that they keep their eyes open, especially the, the riverfront owners for illegal activity, unethical activity. You know, we just need to make sure that we're working to protect what we have here. It is very, very unique and very special. So, uh, so again, that, that resolution, I think we'll bring that to the forefront, and, and again, I very much appreciate the efforts of, uh, and the support of the township, everybody, uh, on the board. So, so again, thank you for that.
Yes.
Another item, um, and this kind of goes to what we were just saying, the, the township-sponsored the North Channel Sturgeon Classic Fishing Tournament. This was our second year this year. Uh, I just got the final numbers in on that, and, uh, you know, we cleared just short of $2,800 for the, be split between the Pearl Beach Lions and our organization. But again, more importantly, that was a big event that highlighted the resource we have here. We had, um, 24 teams this year as opposed to 20 last year. During a night of fishing, we landed 57 and released 57 Lake Sturgeon in one night. We brought about $20,000 into the community from, from what we can figure. I reported to Lottery Commission that, uh, through raffles and such, that we gave away about $8,000 in prizes. We had $2,500 in prize money, $1,800 in the Calcutta. Okay, when you consider the money that we spent on T-shirts and hats and catering and other expenses, beverages, that kind of thing, uh, you consider, I had some friends of mine from out of town that used my boat. You know, they stayed at the state park, but they, they shopped in local stores, they ate in local restaurants, and spent money at the gas stations. So, we figure about a $20,000 economic impact for that, for that one evening, and, uh, and again, we could not do that without the, the support of the township. You know, that, that sponsorship money is our seed money that kind of gets the ball rolling for us, and, uh, you know, and again, it's, it's an event that we use to highlight the very special resource that we have here in the community. So, uh, so it really helps get the word out here and helps bring people into town to, to spend some money, and, uh, and we, well, again, very, very special thing we have here, and, uh, again, I just wanted to thank you for your support, you know, for that tournament, and it's going to be even bigger and better next year.
Right. Thank you, Jim.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah. One really cool thing, I always like to tell people about this fish. You know, they live to be about 100 years old, and in theory, you could, if you're a little kid, you could catch a fish, a sturgeon, and release it, and have your grandson of that kid catch the same fish. So, I mean, I, I think it's, it's just pretty cool. So, all right, thanks a lot, Jim. Uh, so that concludes the supervisor's report, and, uh, moving on, we do have unfinished business. Deputy Treasurer Stipin, I'll, uh, we really don't have anything on that. That'll entertain a motion to, uh, um, we can table it.
So moved. Support.
Okay, uh, all in favor? Any discussion?
We've made a resolution to-
Yeah.
...have it when the new board comes in, and so let them get their-
Exactly.
...feet wet.
And bring it back.
And bring it back, yep.
Yep. So, uh, uh, any more discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, anyone oppose? Motion carries. New business, approve the benefit change to the send group. Uh, you heard the, um, the, uh, uh, new program, and, uh, I don't know if, uh, anyone would like to make a motion. I, I think it's a good thing myself. I'll tell you what, Cindy, especially Cindy, while we both worked hard on it, and we shopped around with four or five different groups, and we told all these people, you know, think out of the box, you know, and, uh, and, uh, they're the, the guys that came up with this, and, um, uh, it, it's, it's gr- I mean, sometimes when you, you work hard and, and you find out what you're doing i- is the right thing, but this, in this case, I mean, we're going to be able to save some money, so.
I'll make a motion to approve the benefit change to ascend group to, um, take over the management of our healthcare, dental, optical, life, and, uh, what else? Our short-term disability.
Support.
Okay, motion support. Any more discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Okay, motion carries. Next, uh, wanted to, to bring this in front of the board, and I was trying to get actually two other groups, too. We have, um, you know, we've been, uh, operating our new contract, or the new contract, but we haven't ratified it yet. We're, we're waiting for some hard numbers from MERS yet before we do that, but I just wanted to, and, and, and all the contracts have 2% per year, uh, change in, um, in the salaries, but I wanted to, um, show you what, you know, the rest of the contract is and, and get it passed and, and, uh, see if there's any questions. But, um, you know, ba- basically, uh, we changed probation from one year to six months for the, this is just the command. Uh, most people, the guys that we hire into command, they've already been an employee. We should have a pretty good idea, and all the other, uh, groups, I believe, are six months probation, and, uh, that was one of the change. Um, then, uh, this is actually my idea, the change, you know, they have flex time. All our groups have flex time, personal, personal time, and in the past, we said that you have to have a two-hour minimum to, uh, to take a benefit of, of any flex time, and thinking, you know, if someone has to just run down to a, a quick doctor's appointment for 45 minutes, why are we making them take two hours? And we changed that from two hours to one-hour time. Um, and then there is some language in, in the, uh, police contract about vacation time. Sick time shall be counted as time worked when calculating overtime. In other words, if, uh, in the middle of the week, someone has two days vacation, and at the end, uh, you know, they, they're asked to work more, um, that, uh, vacation or, or sick time will be counted towards 40 hours or whatever the hour amount is towards calculating a time and a half, and that's just to clear up any ambiguities. And then, also, on Article 32, 30.2, uh, we put in there, they can request in lieu of vacation time, a payout of at least 20 hours, but not more than 48 hours. Uh, this can be done twice a year, May and November. Um, this is something that I'd rather pay out vacation time than let them carry it for a long time, myself personally, for a couple different reasons, but, um, mainly if they, if they have a lot of vacation time booked, and then, you know, five, six years down the road, you gotta pay it off. You're paying them their current wages, not the wages they were five years ago. So, uh, I think financially, in the long run, it's better for the township, and, um, this is just a vehicle. We, we have, we, we, sometimes we have problems with manpower and everything. These guys can't even take their vacation. You know, we just don't, can't do that. Uh, and, uh, so instead of that, uh, you know, we, we have a vehicle where we can, you know, give them some, uh, money for it, or if they need some money for Christmas or whatever, they can cash it in, and, um, this will also cut down on overtime. If we, you know, if we say, "Hey, you gotta use it or lose it" type thing, we still have to find someone to backfill their, their shifts. So, I think it's a win-win, and, uh, that's basically what 30.2 is, and this is the first time we're, we're just working out the bugs right now as far as, uh, cashing out, because we're going to do some in November. I think a few, couple people are.
Artie, was there any consideration about the fact that a person taking vacation is very good for their mind, their stress, their family?
Oh, we don't care. No, I'm staying, well-
Especially if you're in a job of that nature where instead of working continually, you know-
Right.
-work, work, 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 work.
I mean, this is-
It's proven fact that-
Oh, I, I'm sure it is. You know, this gives, uh, that option to the employee. If they say, "Man, I really need a vacation," I mean, they can take a vacation, but if their pocketbook is telling them differently, you know, this is, uh, just a different vehicle that, uh, um, we, we can, uh, instead of forcing them over vacation, they can convert that into, uh, into a few more dollars.
Well, I, I personally have mixed feelings on that, but-
Okay, but it's, it's, they don't have to. It's, uh, it's the employee's option.
But how many people is this command contract for?
Where are we, four?
So you're saying for those four people, they can't get a vacation? I mean, there's the ti- wait, that, um, there's such a lack of people, those four people can't take a vacation?
Not all the time, but sometimes.
I don't, I don't think that, that's a, a good state to be in, but-
Well-
Well, you, all you can do is hire somebody else, huh?
Yeah. I understand that, John.
Okay.
Something to think about.
In fact, we used to have three, but we brought up Billy, and now we have four. We, we were down to three, and, uh, we just brought up Billy into command, so we have four.
So I'm sorry, are you, you're, are you looking for approval of the command contract or the-
Of these changes.
Or the approval of the memorandum of understanding?
The memora- yes. The memo of understanding.
You want a motion, Artie?
Sure.
I'll make a motion that we make these changes as presented to the board tonight. Articles 9.1, 16.1, 24.5, 22.1, and 30.2.
Support. All right, we have motion and support. Any more discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Artie Brison.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. John Horvath.
Yes.
Joanne Shirkey.
Yes.
Karen Straffen.
Yeah.
Tom Federer.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Uh, next, number three, we have the reappointment of, uh, Dennis Samansky to the ZBA. And I attached, uh, email that he, you know, is requesting to be on, on there. Uh, he is currently on the ZBA. He's probably been on there for a couple, three years, and, um-
I'll make a motion that we reappoint Dennis Samansky to the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Support.
Okay, motion of support. Any more discussion?
Can you, uh, eh, put the words in here for us?
That's how it came out. Uh, you can, current ZBA board member, Clay Township property owner for so many years, Harson's Island, uh, Lions member, uh, US, US Air Force veteran.
It's the last one I can't figure out.
Yes, licensed contractor and over on, I don't know how many years, uh, field and business owner. I'm not sure exactly. It got cut off on the printer. So.
Somebody was copying something enlarged.
I mean, he's been there for-
Yes, he is.
Four or five years.
We all know who he is.
This isn't going to impact anything.
So, okay, we have motion of support. Uh, all in favor, sing- oh, any more discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Uh, same thing, reappoint Jim DeConic. I don't have anything in writing, but he verbally told me he'd like to, uh, uh, be on another term as the alternate ZBA representative.
Make a motion, we are, we reappoint Jim DeConic, alternate zoning board of appeals representative.
Support.
Okay, we have motion and support. Any discussion?
I would like to see that contingent upon the fact that he gives you a letter, some sort of a written, you know, not just word of mouth.
Okay, so, uh, his, uh-
And, and-
-reappointment is on condition that I get something in writing from him.
And present it to the board, let us see it, you know.
Okay, we'll put it in-
I'll amend my motion.
We'll put it in the consent agenda.
Yeah.
Okay, you're-
Well, you, would you like me to amend my motion?
Yes.
Or just would you like to table it?
No, amend your-
Okay, amend my motion per Ms. Shirkey's comment.
I'll amend my support for your motion.
Do we have to amend the meeting?
We have to do things-
You deal with it.
Do things, do things to proper-
I got it, I got it, I got it.
Okay.
It's getting to be a little much.
All right. Any more discussion?
You want to do a roll call on that?
No, thank you. Okay, hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Next, we have a resolution, uh, authorizing the Section 125 of the Cafeteria Plan. This is basically so we could do the FSA. Uh, we had several employees wondering why we don't have FSA. I didn't have a good answer for them, and, uh, this will allow us, beginning of the year, to, uh, create a FSA, Flexible Spending-
Account.
Account for health, and that's what Dennis was basically hitting on.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2016-36, a resolution authorizing Section 125 Cafeteria Plan for employees.
Support.
Okay, we have motion and support. Any more discussion? Or any discussion on that? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Cindy Valentine, yes. John Horvath.
Yes.
Joanne Shirkey.
Yes.
Karen Straffen.
Yes.
Tom Federer.
Yes.
Artie Brison.
Sure, yes.
Okay, Fire Department, new part-time employees hiring. You want to tell us about them, Daryl?
Well, you've got copies of their application-
Right.
...resumes and so on, so there's not a whole lot to tell you since I thought it was going to be on the consent agenda, so I didn't bring anything with me, but, uh-
My bad, sorry. Been a busy week.
Right, I am.
Can you pronounce their names, please?
Yeah.
There's a few I was looking at.
I think that's why he was really hoping for the consent agenda.
Joseph. You do it.
Zoltan.
I would like to make a correction that Megan's last name is, I think, uh-
Igor.
McMillan.
Yes, McMillan.
McMillan, on here.
Her last name?
Mm-hmm. Megan McMillan on this. Here, do you want to see it?
Yes.
Is that correct?
No, on here, her last name is Rickard.
Oh, okay.
So.
So we have Megan Rickard, we have Benjamin Conroy, Troy Wukowski, Igor, any idea?
Clagic.
Klajic, and Joseph Zoltan.
You gonna make that a motion to hire them as part-time employees?
Yes, that's a motion to hire them as part-time employees.
Support.
And we have support. Any discussion?
Yes, I'd just like to say that in looking all of these applications over, they are all very well-qualified people.
Mm-hmm.
Glad to have them a part of our Fire Department.
The only thing that I would say is that we need to add a class in handwriting.
I would probably have to take that class, too.
Start doing online applications. You, too, Daryl.
Okay, we, motion of support. Any more, uh, discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Um, next, I wanted to talk about the Colony Tower just a little bit. You know, the, the township owns that tower, and, um, there's some lights that are, are burned out on it, and in the past, actually, a good friend of mine lives down there, Joe Lewandowski, he would climb out there and, uh, change the light bulbs, but actually now there's a couple fixtures that are bad, and quite honestly, I get a little nervous. I mean, I don't mind he goes up there and puts up the Christmas wreaths and, and stuff, but I get a little nervous with him up there. I mean, he's just, you know, doing it out of the goodness of his heart, and God forbid he gets hurt. It's township property, liability issue- and God forbid he gets hurt, it's township property, liability issues. That's got me thinking. So I talked to Philip Sine, which is the guy that quoted this, actually lives down the Colony, too, about changing it over to LED lights. Right now, only half the lights are being lit, and you can barely see the colony where it says Colony Tower. And I have a quote for $1,781 for the new fixtures and the LED lights. And you could see the return on investment from just electricity saved is six and a half years. But where you really save is these LED lights, does it have it on here? You know, they burn for about 15 years. I mean, every two, three years, Joe's climbing up there, changing light bulbs. And that's actually where you do save more money. And I'd like to get the board's permission to accept this quote, and we'll put some new LED lights on the Colony Tower. And I also asked them, so everybody knows, to figure out and give me a bid on what's gonna take to get the light in the top going. And make special considerations, we don't want a spotlight that's gonna shine in people's windows, but we'd like to have a nice white beacon going around. And just to let everybody know that Clay Township's here, and we're open for business, we're home, lights are on. So that, I didn't have that yet, but while he's up here, up doing the work, he's gonna scope that out for us. And this does, just so the board knows, if there's any problems with any junction boxes or anything, this quote doesn't include that. So if, you know, if there's a problem with electrical wiring feeding it, that is gonna be a little over and above, but I just wanted to...
How long did that strobe last that was on there before?
Oh, I'm not real sure.
It wasn't up there too long before complaining about it.
Well, there was, yeah.
Because it was like a camera flash.
Right.
All throughout the bird aisles there.
Right, it was, it was, it was a spotlight, like. And Phillips, you know, they're the ones that designed the lights in the park and everything. They're, they're very knowledgeable as far as, you know, different types of lighting and how they shine and how it, how it works.
I think it was just a light that faded out and came back on, just so that it looked like it was rotating, but without taking out half of the township.
Right. No, so... But if the board wishes, I'd like to get approval for this quote.
I think it's great, it's something we took over, and I think it needs to look its best out there, so...
Where are you gonna get the money?
It's under, I'm sorry, I did forget that. It's under the building maintenance, under general, and I think we've spent about $2,000 out of that. We had the ducts cleaned and some other work, and we have $25,000 budgeted on that line item.
Okay.
So it's there.
I'll make a motion that we approve the light upgrade on the Colony Tower for the amount of $1,781.37, not to include any potential electrical wiring that may need to be corrected if possible.
Support. Okay, we have motion and support. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion carries. Next. How should we do this? Yeah. I have, these are just certificates of appreciation, and they're to all the trustees. Being a trustee is really an unforgiving job. Right. And I just wanted to, you know, show our appreciation of all our trustees. And this is for Joanne Shirkey, term 2012 to 16, and 2000, oh, July 20th, 2015 and 16. So there you go, Joanne.
That's a surprise.
It is a surprise.
That's surprising, thank you.
And then I have also for this past term as township trustee, John Horvath. And John?
Thank you.
If you don't make it back in, you're coming back to our next meeting.
So either way, you'll be here at the next meeting.
So either way, you're gonna be here at the next meeting.
Well, whatever.
Whatever, whether you like it or not, you're gonna be back here. And then Karen Straffan, five and one-quarter years of service, August 1, 2011 to November 20, 2016. That is a... And then Thomas Federer, five and one-half years of service, May 19, 2011 to November 20, 2016.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, I got one for Charles Miller. I'll, I'll get that to him, who...
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor.
Thank you.
Do I get a hug?
Later, baby.
Okay.
All right. So I just wanted to let you know we are appreciative of everything. Public comments, do we have any public comments? No public comments, last call. Okay, board member comments. Karen?
No.
Better let me go last.
Okay, I'll let you go last. Joanne?
Um, it's very good to see that you report on all the activities going on in your supervisor's report, but it's nice that we have this recreation coordinator that's working on all these tennis things, and it's Cindy, she's working hard and has some good ideas.
No cost to us.
Yes, yes.
You know, it's all done by Attorney General, Michigan State Extension, US Tennis. It's all, all good.
It was a good...
No cost to the taxpayers.
Glad to see it.
Yep, Mr. Horvath?
I'm gonna give you a break. I hope this is the last time.
I always told you I'd rather have you on my side of the table than on the other side.
Probably.
Cindy?
Um, yes, I want to thank the entire board. This last, just over the last year, almost year and a half that I've been on the board with all of you has been a great experience, and it's been a pleasure to work with all of you. And whether I'm here or somebody else is here, and those of you that are coming back, regardless, you guys will all be greatly missed by me soon.
Thank you. Um, actually, I just wanna expand on what Cindy did say. I mean, I think, I had a great four years, and I'm hoping it continues, but who knows, we'll find out tomorrow, and everyone go out and vote. And, yeah, we'll continue on. And oh, also, it's getting dark out earlier, and we've noticed, seen a lot of kids running around in dark clothes. Cindy almost knocked, or hit a couple today, so...
That was Joanne, but I have had, I have had the same experience many times.
So, so put something bright on your kids, it's really dark out there.
Especially now that they're lighting up leaves in the ditch, the smoke, it's, it's very hard to see them.
Yeah.
Artie, mine's 54.
Oh, okay.
All right, you ready?
I'm ready.
All right.
Peach, wow.
I got a bunch to say.
We're gonna miss it, huh?
Will you leave me those notes?
I'm gonna include everybody, too. All right, let's see. All right, "It's been an honor and a privilege to serve the taxpayers of Clay Township. I'd like to thank my wife Melinda and our children for their support during my time as a trustee. I spent much time away from home on township business. I was appointed to finish the term of John McCouch, who passed away unexpectedly. I attended Clay Township Board meetings on a regular basis and was a big fan of John's, and I hope that he would have approved how I conducted myself and the decisions that I made as a trustee on this board. I'd like to thank former supervisor Jay DeBoyer, our current county clerk, for choosing me to take John's place. Believe me, it wasn't easy for him to convince me to come aboard. I enjoyed watching the meetings, but I didn't want to be in the spotlight. I was no stranger to politics. My father Bill Federer was a St. Clair Shore City Councilman, Mayor Pro Tem. I know he's smiling down at me now, knowing that I've done the best work that I can for the people of Clay Township. I've made some good friends during my time here." Trustee Karen Straffan. "I appreciate the kindness you've shown myself and my family. You've helped me make many good decisions here and kept my fiscally conservative compass pointed in the right direction. You're one of the most charitable people I've ever met, selflessly working to help others. Thank you." Trustee Joanne Shirkey. "I appreciate your friendship and how you reached out to me as a new trustee, helping me with any questions I had and helping me to remain objective in my decision-making. I believe that you work in the township's best interests. You're an expert on policy, environmental issues, and have helped us stay on the right track. Thank you."
Thank you, Tom.
Trustee John Horvath. Can you hear me, John?
Yeah.
All right.
Very good, thank you.
Good, John, we might not have always agreed upon things, but I appreciate your perspective, willingness to fight for what you believe in, and your years of service to the community. Thank you, sir. I appreciate you. Cindy Valentine, our clerk. "Thank you for your hard work here at the township. You've done a great job bringing trust back to the clerk's office. You also brought the township offices back up to speed after the previous clerk left us up the creek and stole the paddle. I look forward to your next term as Clay Township clerk."
Thank you.
Supervisor Bryson. "It's a pleasure to call you friend. You've done, you've done great work in your first term as a Clay Township supervisor, and most cases, we've agreed upon things, some cases we haven't."
Sometimes not.
"I'm sure that there have been a few occasions when we've been overheard arguing with each other."
Couple.
"Working together with the board, we've made positive changes for the residents and taxpayers of Clay. In addition, we've made Clay Township more appealing to tourists who travel the land and waterways of this beautiful place we call home. I wish you the best of luck in the election tomorrow, and I look forward to four more years of your positive attitude, optimism, and hard work for the people of this township. Thank you, sir."
Appreciate that.
Police Chief Coach isn't here. I'm disappointed you're not here, Mike. You knew this was my last meeting.
Yeah.
Police Chief Coach, "Thank you for your hard work as a new police chief. You've had your hands full for the last year with the building expansion, implementing new policies and making sure your officers are well-equipped and trained. I've always tried to be an advocate to this board, making sure our officers have the proper tools and training to do their jobs safely. I'm also thankful to our dispatchers for doing a wonderful job for our police and fire department. To our men and women in blue, thank you for your service to this community. I'm not alone when I say I appreciate all that you do to keep Clay Township safe." John DeBoyer's not here either. "John DeBoyer, our water and sewer superintendent. You've always been very kind to me and answered every question that I have honestly. You run a tight ship and always, and always work within your budget. I've only ever heard compliments about you and your department. Thank you very much for the work that you and your crew accomplish. You gentlemen maintain a system that in some locations is beyond its expected service life and keep the water flowing seamlessly. Thank you, sir." Fire Chief Daryl Dupage. "All I have here is a smiley face, I'm joking, Daryl. We've been at odds on several occasions over budgets and policies. I'd like to thank you for tolerating me. I appreciate all of the hard work, making sure that the residents and visitors of Clay Township are safe. You and your firemen and women work in a unique environment with many different challenges. Your firemen and women are well-trained, equipped, and they get the job done. Thank you, sir." Barb Schut and Sherry Lawton, both of you ladies have been very kind to me, and I appreciate your hard work here. Barb, you've done an excellent job for the township over the years, and I hope you enjoy your retirement. Thank you, Sherry, you're going to be a great assessor for the township. You are well-trained and efficient. Thank you, and best wishes in your future here." Sid Brown. "You're handling a very busy, busy building department as of the last couple of years. Thank you for your service to this growing community." James Prott, the code enforcement officer. "Nobody wants to see Jim pull up in front of their house."
He's like the dog catcher.
"Thank you for doing the thankless job of making sure the rules are followed and the people of the township are safe. Thank you to all the members of the planning commission, DDA, board of review, and zoning board of appeals, there are too many to list, I appreciate all of what you do. Most of all, I'd like to thank the residents of Clay Township for their trust in me to sit on this board. It was truly a privilege and my pleasure to serve you. Thank you."
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
I got a feeling that you're not, you're not gonna disappear, though. I know you're working a lot with the Pearl Beach...
I'm gonna be way more dangerous...
I know.
From that podium.
You and John are gonna be...
Than I am here. John, I'll pick you up at the ferry.
Oh, you don't have to, I'll swim across. I have no idea. But right now, Tom's the president of Pearl Beach Lions, and he's doing lots of great things there, and I'm sure he'll be around, and yes, we...
We're growing, and it's only going to get better.
Right.
Yep.
And yes, we have become good friends over this.
Yes.
All right.
Let me, let me tell a quick story. The first time I ever met Artie...
Okay.
It was at The Boat. He owned, he owned a fine establishment next to the ferry called The Boat. And I told him that, I said, "Artie, the first time I ever met you was at The Boat," and he said, "Oh, I apologize." So that's, that's the only thing you had to say about it. Yeah, I found that very funny. But thank you so much, everybody, I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you, Tom.
The only thing I can say, Tommy, you did a, a good job of saying goodbye, I can't do that.
Thank you, John.
All right, actually, I just wanna let everybody know, we are changing the time of our board meetings to seven o'clock from 7:30. That was an original, what's that?
When?
Next meeting.
Next meeting, seven o'clock. That was in the resolution that we passed. I hear a lot from, all the other meetings in the whole county are at seven, and, and like the news reporters and everything, they, they're gonna thank me. They say, there's a big difference with that extra half hour, so... We are gonna start at seven o'clock, November 21st here, so I just wanna make everyone aware of that. Looking for one more motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Support. All right, thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thanks for coming, everybody, and...
8:30, Matt, thank you.
Everyone get out and vote.